Thank you Lori.
Second.
Thank you Lori Lai. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. You consent agenda is adopted. Recognitions, Dr. Linsko.
Yes, this coming up here is the School Board Recognition Week. Our school board members, it's not a highly paid position. It is a voluntary position. So we thank our school board members for what they do. Coming up here on January 21st through the 27th is School Board Recognition Week. And we'll do something that week to community wise. But we have a certificate here we would like to present to each of our board members. Thank them for their service and their time as we recognize them and all the work that they do. So starting out here, Steve Bruce would like to thank you. Steve, your certificate over here. Rich Abshon.
Thanks sir.
There we go. Lori Lai. Thank you Lori Lai, towards.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you Mary. Thank you Pam.
Oh, we could do that, we could do that after.
We could do that after, okay. Lori Maxman, thank you Lori.
Thank you.
There you go. Michael Kuti, thank you Michael. Scott O, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I've got all that.
Okay.
Nope, I'm next.
So you are next, recognizing difference makers.
Absolutely. We have as a community, as school board members, for everyone that's here, we all have a role in our community as stakeholders, whether we are our students, whether our staff, our parents, our school board members, our community, all of us in this together. So we started recognizing those that have made a difference in our students' lives. And what a tremendous, it's been exciting actually because there's so many folks that make a difference in our kids' lives every day. And so each month we've started doing this. So tonight, starting out here, we'd like to recognize Judge Mary Russell who is joining here. And I'll read a little something here and then I'd like to present her here with just a thank you. Judge Russell cracks the gavel at Lewis &amp; Clark every Thursday at 7:30 a.m. calling truancy court to order as she works with students who are struggling with attendance. She works with them to improve their academics, behavior, and weekly responsibility goals. Parents are also encouraged to attend and work with the school. She's been doing this for over 10 years and continues to instill good work ethic to our kids. Her influence is tremendous and we just wanted to publicly thank her and recognize her for her time that she's doing this and so she definitely is a difference maker. So Judge Russell, if you'd come forward please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time doing this.
Thank you. I enjoy doing it. Keeping students in school keeps them out of our criminal justice system. And so I love doing it, did not expect it, Lord. And thank you all for your service to our school board.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, would you like a picture? Could we get a picture here?
Oh, sure.
That drone in here? There we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
More difference makers that we are recognizing. So I would like to introduce Brenda Hatfield, she's our Director of Quality Improvement. She is going to recognize some of our Google certified teachers. And she's going to bring them in here and the floor is yours.
I have 20 of my 50 Google certified friends with me tonight. And they're going to keep filing, they just keep coming. We are so very excited they're here. I told them to kind of come in and we'll take up both sides and we'll see how much space we can take up. What I want you to know is we've had 50 of our staff become Google certified. They've mastered technology skills needed to integrate Google tools in our classrooms. These difference makers completed this task and it is not an easy task, they will tell you, on their own time. And they did it because what they think is most important is making sure that they can raise the bar for our students and our other staff. And so I'm so very proud of these folks and how hard they've worked and all the hours that they've put in, again, off cycle, in order to make sure that our students have the tools that they need. So we're going to give them a quick certificate and hopefully Shelby's going to help me do that. Sarah McDonald, Cheryl Long, Marsha Burton, Carrie Martin, Nicole Jenkins, Randy Ferry, Charlotte Boothard, Melanie Thompson, Elizabeth Rustemeyer. No, way over there, good luck. Oh Kara, I worked on your name. Done now.
Done now.
Oh, not even close. Ashley Holtmeyer, Ashley Engel, Amanda Jackson, Dawn Day, Mary Johnston, Garth Hagen, Valerie Bassnett, Joey Corwin, Sarah Roslin, Beth Hellis, Megan Walker, Karen Gregory. So I just want to thank all of these folks for all of the hard work and the extra hours and effort that they put in to make sure that our classrooms are successful. So please, join me in giving these 20 of my 50. And now Larry, you're going to get in a photo with all of them and wear the scrunchie all in.
One of shirts.
Oh yeah, shirt. Who would like to tell us? Ashley, why don't you spend a couple minutes telling us how hard it is? Yes, tell me everything you did.
Well, it was just learning a lot about the products that come with our Google Classroom and all the different apps and then how we can apply them to both student achievement and working with data within the professional teams that we have as professionals. And so for me, it was two sided, both learning how to work better with technology with kids and also with my coworkers, so.
How many modules and hours did it take you?
There were 13 modules, right? 13 or 15. And the way that the classroom set up was kind of like a hybrid where, at least for our section, we did our work before we had class and then we came to class with our questions and then applying those within the class with our classmates.
Many, many hours?
Yes, many hours. Yeah.
Was it a four hour class?
Well, two hours.
Two hours for seven weeks.
Three hours.
Three hours.
Never made it.
Lori couldn't get past the password, how'd she get it?
Alright friends, so we're going to get the scrunchie in the circle. Larry, good luck, scrunchie in the circle.
Come on Lori. Get on in there.
I always want to be in the picture. This is the first time somebody's ever done that.
You can have some.
Take Larry's, he likes to take tests, take all those. Send him the picture. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, Lori. Thank you guys.
He likes to take tests, just take them all.
Thank you.
Have some, grab some candy on the way out.
I figured they were nuts for the nuts.
I just, that's what I thought. Trying to tell someone.
That's why my thing is messed up, it's been up.
Hey. How's your computer work? Mine works good, yours?
Any other comments on that?
I don't think so. I think it's just important for all of us, we recognize a lot of difference makers and just what a tremendous job they do, so, as they left, but we do appreciate each and every one of them. And a lot of folks that aren't, that's what they do every day. It's not that I did anything special, that's just kind of the bar of, I do things that way. And so we thank all of you and all of our staff for everything they do.
Well said. Reports in Communications, Chief of Learning, update Dr. Brian Shindorff.
Alright, thank you. I want to take just a few minutes and just update you on a few things that we're working on. And so I'm going to start with summer school. I'm going to hopefully bring you a plan for a revised summer school here in the near future, but just wanted to update you with what we're working on and if you have any input as we work, I'd like, we'd love to have it. So a couple of things that we're wanting to accomplish is, one, we need more upper grade intermediate kids in summer school. And so we're going to work on a plan for how do we attract them and then we think that we can through some programs like some bridge programs and that kind of things to bridge, not bridge isn't gambling, but bridges in, none of you got that.
It's a card game.
That's an old card game.
It's an old one. I never played it, but I saw my mom and dad play it.
We're quite strict.
Bridging kids from elementary to middle and from middle to secondary, we believe we can do some programs. So hopefully we can get some more secondary students interested in the summer program. But also looking at creating kind of a double track system where we have both an enrichment system for summer school and a remedial and an enrichment. So identifying kids who are struggling readers, struggling mathematicians, and tracking them through an intensive intervention or further support from the school year. And we're currently working on some curriculum for those teachers to use to make sure that we're meeting the needs of some of our struggling readers. And then an enrichment program for kiddos who are doing okay with reading and math and want to go on into some other exploratory concepts. And so hopefully we're going to bring that plan to you in the near future to share with you, okay? So looking to improve our summer school program. Another thing that we're currently, conversations we're having, just want to again, share with you, if you have ideas, we'd love to have them. But in terms of the technology for our construction projects, Joe and I have had some conversations and Mr. Resloy some conversations with the construction managers and the team to discuss what is the classroom technology going to look like? Because we are building schools for the future and so we want to make sure they're putting technology and then it's going to meet those needs. And so currently, if you were to go into most classrooms, you would see a projector in the middle of the room, you'd see a smart board or a screen. We are considering going away from that system and going more to what you see here, which would be a large TV screen in the classroom and those TVs would be interactive. The benefits of the system is, one of the most, one of the biggest costs that comes out of the technology department are bulbs for projectors, they're very expensive. And so we would not have bulb replacement costs, we wouldn't have the cost of projectors. Instead, we would have what are called smart TVs. And so they'd be about the size of that one right there in the classroom. The benefit of them is that classroom teachers would not be tied to a device that is tied to that. So currently, right now, to use their systems, there is a device that is connected, hardwired. And so you have to go to that device and be at that device if you're going to do work on the smart board or at the smart board. A smart TV would allow a teacher with a Chromebooks that they have to roam around the classroom and anything that they did wirelessly on their Chromebook, it would be projected onto the smart TV. So they could do, they could touch screen, they could use a stylus, so they could do a lot of work on their laptop around the classroom. So benefit of, instead of me being stuck to the front of the classroom and looking back at kids with a device itself, I can be in the back of the classroom and projecting and seeing those devices and seeing what kids are doing. So a lot of benefits to that system, a little bit more costly to install, but when you look at the lifespan of the devices and the cost that we have for bulbs and projectors, we believe it's cost effective. So we have one of these systems set up at Dick's Road and currently playing with that to make certain that it'll do everything that we're told that it will do. And then hopefully we'll be able to start sharing that information with teachers. But just wanted you to know the direction we're headed. In terms of the existing high school, we are also, when we talk to the construction manager, they're going to have to do a lot of removal of ceilings in the classrooms. And what they're saying is that they would have to remove the current projectors out of the existing high school in order to do the work that they're going to need to do. So we're also looking at the cost, instead of putting those projectors back in, let's put the new system in and we can use the existing smart boards and projectors in our elementary schools until we phase those out. So it's kind of the thinking that we have, more than happy to entertain discussions about that or questions that you have about those systems.
Question for Dr. Shindorff.
I had a question on the summer school, but not on the technology.
Go ahead, I have one other item and I'll wait.
Is there enough demand to perhaps have an ELL section for English language learners? Something to immerse them in English during the summer? Is there enough demand for it?
I can't answer whether there's demand, but certainly we can explore that and we can offer it. And if we at least offer it and find out if there's demand, that's how we would know. So we certainly can add that to our list.
Okay. And then I don't know if it's appropriate for summer school, but sometimes our English language learners also come from families where the families might be involved in adult education. And I don't know if a summer school or evenings might be a time that perhaps learning English as a family might be helpful? Or if, again, I don't know what the demand is. So just throwing it out there.
And that can be explored through our adult ed program with Jennifer. Okay. I would like to take just the next few minutes and just share with you, I know in November we discussed some of our student management and looking at, I shared with you at that time, the students that were being sent to the office, what they were being sent for, what the consequences were. And we walked through all that information and told you that we continue to look at and explore some of the other data and information. And so I want to start by sharing with you, you all know that earlier this year, DESI had contacted us and said that we're going to, they would be looking into the discrepancy that we had with some of our suspension of IEP students, more specifically, black students with an IEP in terms of the number of suspension days in comparison to non-black IEP. And so we went through a review with DESI. That review consisted of us providing them a lot of documentation in terms of what our policies and procedures were, sharing student records with them so they could review past suspensions. And then they took that information, reviewed it, then they contacted us and asked to interview staff members. So we set up interviews for DESI to come in and to the Office of Special Education. They came in and interviewed multiple staff members. And the purpose of those interviews were to determine if the practices that we had aligned with the policies that we had. That's really what they were looking for. I know that in my report, I shared with you the outcome of that review. And I've since learned that Bridget also shared that with you, but I'd like to read the conclusion, the letter that they provided this over Christmas break. And it states, "After completing the comprehensive review, the significant discrepancy in the rates of suspension and expulsion of children with disabilities by race or ethnicity, black students with disabilities, for greater than 10 days in a school year, is not the result of inappropriate district policies, procedures, or practices." So basically what they've said is that they are satisfied with the policies, the practices, and procedures that we currently have in place. Doesn't mean that we don't have work to do, we do, but it was good to get that report back. Along with that, I did a review as well, and you have that data in front of you. I want to share with you upfront that the data that you have in front of you is in no way to be a determination of any means, but it is, I believe, data that'll help us to look a little bit further and answer some of the questions that we have. And so in front of you, what I've done was, I took the office referrals from the first day of school, this year, from the first day of school until Christmas break, there were 4,663 office referrals from the first day, for the first semester. I took those office referrals and I reviewed just under 3,300, there were 3,286, I believe I reviewed. And by review, I mean I took them and categorized them by the reason that the student was sent to the office. And then I looked to see, and then I separated them out by race to say, if they came for the same reason, did we treat them fairly or equitably? And so what you have in front of you is data that represents just what I found in the first semester. So let me share that with you. You have in front of you 11 reasons that a student would be sent to the office. So the first set is alcohol, the second one is assault and drugs and fighting. So 11 reasons. There are obviously more reasons that a student would get sent to the office. What I've given you are the 11 that would be considered pretty significant, you need to be sent to the office. So they are alcohol and assault and fighting and sexual misconduct and disruptions and those kinds of things. There are about, of the 4,600 office referrals, there are about 1,300 not represented in this data. And I want to be clear as to why that is. So there, what I found was there are some reasons that kids go to the office that don't apply to an in-school or out-of-school suspension. So for example, one of the largest ones was acting up on the bus. There were well over 600 times that a student went to the office for misbehaving on the bus. And almost in every case, not 100%, they were either warned, stop doing that, or they were removed from the bus. And so I couldn't categorize them as being an in-school or out-of-school suspension, so they weren't included. There were several, 400 in fact, from truancy and tardy. So kids who didn't show up to school or showed up late, well, obviously, we didn't suspend them from school for not showing up for school. So I didn't think it was fair to include those kinds of things. And then one other one, which is just the opposite, is oftentimes students are assigned to a detention for doing something wrong. And if you don't show up for a detention, then there's a consequence. And in 100% of the cases, there were 74 of them, not showing up for an in-school, not showing up for a detention resulted in an out-of-school suspension. So since it was 100% of them out of school, there wasn't any reason to put those in here. Okay? So just being upfront with, there are about 1,300 not in here. So here's what I found, if you were to go through these 11, it provides for you the number of events, times that a student showed up at the office for alcohol, for example, and what the race was. You'll notice that the first one is pretty limiting because the only students that showed up was Hispanic and white. The second one is assault. Assault happened to be the biggest discrepancy that I found between white students and non-white students. You'll notice that the Hispanic subgroup was the largest suspension rate. However, if you look at the number, it was only two times that Hispanic students showed up for that. And so there's, you've got to take that into consideration. And so if you were to take out the fact that there were two, you would notice then that black would have been the highest out-of-school suspension rate, followed by multiracial and followed by white. And again, this one is the one that probably had the most discrepancy between out-of-school suspension with white and non-white students. It also is important to note that when it comes to assault, not all assaults are equal. So a student could be walking down the hall, kick a student from behind and be sent to the office as an assault. Or a student could literally pick up something from the classroom and hit somebody multiple times and cause injury, could be an assault. So that's not taken into consideration here, so just want to be clear. In terms of drugs, white students had the highest out-of-school suspension percentage. And again, these are not numbers, these are percents. And because what we do know is that there are more black students sent to the office than white, we learned that in November. So instead of using numbers, I'm using percent. So regardless of whether there was 10 or 20, we're using the percent of that group that would be suspended. So for drugs, white were most likely to be out-of-school suspension, followed by black, then multiracial, then Hispanic. For fighting, actually it was a Hispanic subgroup, then multiracial, then black, and then white. For physical contact, you'll see that it was multiracial students more likely, then followed by black, then white, then Hispanic. And for sexual misconduct, it was multirace. However, again, if you look, there was only one incident of multiracial. So if you were to take that out, then it would be white at 67% of them were suspended and black was at 38%. Threats and verbal assault was multiracial, followed by white, then black, then Hispanic. For weapons, black students were at 67% out of school and white were 42. For bullying, again, multiracial, followed by white and then black. Disrespect to staff was Hispanic population, followed by black, then multiracial, then white. And disruptive conduct and speech was white students more likely to be suspended, then multiracial, then black, and then Hispanic. So what I did was, so if you were to look at all of those, obviously, there isn't a lot of consistency in what group was more likely to be suspended. So there wasn't a lot of consistency in that one, other than the assault, as I stated. But on the last page, I shared with you all of those, I took all of the offenses and put them together so you can see where they're at there. By race, and you can see that if put all together, you'll notice that being suspended from school, regardless of those 11 things, that 16% of black students were suspended for them, 15% of white students were suspended, 16% multiracial, and 11% Hispanic were suspended. So there really actually was consistency in the out-of-school suspension rate, other than 1% of black and multirace over white. So then I did this, the last one, if you look at the numbers that I shared with you on those 11 events, some of them are much higher than others. And so remember, we talked about some of them are the majority of the reasons that kids get sent to the office. So I took the three highest, physical contact, disrespect to staff, and disruptive conduct. And you'll notice that those are the three highest. They are, for disrespect to staff, it's 567, disruptive conduct is 1,791, and physical contact was 556. That in itself, those three things out of the 11 represented 89% of the kids that got sent to the office. So I took the bulk of those things, I put them into this chart, and you can see by race then, how frequent kids were suspended from school by race. You'll see that of all of those three major offenses, the multirace had an out-of-school suspension rate of 12.76. White was 10.66, black was 10.48, and Hispanic was 6.80. So again, I want to say that this is in no way some kind of a determination of anything, but I do think that it helps us to get more answers to where we want to get, and that is to, we still have a couple of issues. We have too many kids being inappropriate to school, that's just a fact. And we also know that we still have a larger percentage of black students going to the office over other races. This was just to determine whether or not we're being fair and consistent and equitable in terms of out-of-school suspension. That is all this report does, nothing else. There's no other determination implied in this information. So I couldn't find any, if you will, consistent discrepancies. I could find individual ones, small places, but overall, I wasn't able to find any discrepancies in our out-of-school suspension rate. So questions about that data?
One question. One question. How do you determine being assault, fighting, physical contact?
Yeah, so that's one of the issues, is that that is really determined on the principle that's entering it into, or the person that's entering into the system to determine whether or not kicking someone from behind is assaulting somebody, disrespecting somebody, is it fighting? Did the person turn around? So that's the, that's part of the, that's why I want to be cautious not to say there's any determination here, because there's still things that are not included in this. So you're absolutely right.
Okay.
It also does not include here the number of days. These are the number of times someone got suspended. So a next step with this would be to determine whether or not the suspensions are longer.
Okay. And when you do that, are you going to look at it from the standpoint, was this the first offense versus the second versus the third, and see if some are given the max at the very first for consistency sake?
Yes, that's one of the levels that still needs to be determined, is whether or not these are repeat offenders. And so that is digging a lot deeper and a lot more work, but absolutely, that's something that needs to be determined. I'm simply saying that on the surface level, this is what we have on the surface level. So I just want to be clear about that.
It's a good start.
Yeah. I think it answers a lot of questions, there's still questions remaining, but I think this goes a long way to answering the community questions.
Still working on it.
Yeah. It's a good start though.
Thank you.
Thank you Lori.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
Next item is a report from your Chief Financial and Operations Officer. Jason, do you have information you'd like to share? Jason, do you have information you'd like to share with us? Or I understand, I think Kerry Gampf has got some.
Kerry has some, has an update on the building projects, and I'd be happy, I put some information in my report about the budget timeline, and be happy to answer any questions anybody had. But other than that, I was going to let Kerry take my time.
You yield your time?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Kerry, welcome.
I'm yielding my time.
Kerry Gampf, good to see you again.
I'm sending you a short.
Again, we have, when you look at the tasks underway, whether it be from a design standpoint or the construction manager's standpoint or work in the field, there's a lot of things going on simultaneous. And literally, it's the master schedule between everybody is four or five pages long. But these are some milestones that are coming up in the near future that are pretty big deals. As you know, the clearing and grubbing is underway at the site. The next, what I would call, design team deliverable to the construction manager would be the civil and earthwork package. That's due January 15th. So that'll be a significant amount of grading. Primarily, the goal is to get the building footprint graded so that other trades can start. You'll see right under that, as soon as the civil engineer finishes that package and delivers it to the construction manager for bidding, we need to have a meeting to nail down the practice fields. We have what we think is what the district wants and what the athletic folks expect, but rather than slow that package down, we held that back a bit. We're going to meet with the civil engineer as soon as that package is out, nail those practice fields down in terms of the amenities and the precise locations, and then issue that either as a separate package or an addendum to the earthwork package. But the January 15th was already set in the construction manager's master schedule, and so to stay on schedule, we are issuing that earthwork package on the 15th. February 16th, and so, I'm sorry, the dates I'm giving you right now are on the second high school on 179. February 16th, the design development submission is due. That simultaneously goes to you, the owner. It'll also go to the construction manager for price verification. But that is, that will have information from every discipline. It won't simply be floor plans, it will be the beginnings of mechanical systems, electrical systems, structural systems, things like that. So that's due February 16th, and it will include narratives along with that. So that's sort of a milestone in our contract to deliver. Next, on March 1st, site utility package. Anytime you see "package" to CMR, remember when I talked about the complexity of the project and the schedule, there would be some overlap of design and construction. So when you see "package" to CMR, that means what information can the design team provide to the construction manager to keep the schedule moving? So the next one would be site utilities. March 1st, again, primarily coming from the civil engineers. March 2nd, a structural package to the construction manager. May 1st, paving and landscape, which emphasis on paving because of the prep work that has to go underneath any paving. And then May 15th is the agreed-upon goal for final construction documents for the second high school. And that would be, that'll be a large set of drawings, and there will be an updated cost estimate and updated presentation. So that, in a nutshell, is the second high school upcoming deliverables. I might add, when you look at something like February 16th, design development submission, there are dozens and dozens of items to get to that, be it meetings, conference calls among all the parties that are working on it, meetings with faculty, meetings between the design team and things like that. So I'm really putting the deliverable dates on here for you. On the current high school, we're currently in design development. We expect to be about 50% the middle of this month. And the reason I write that down is it's not necessarily a deliverable, final deliverable to the owner, but that's sort of a milestone for us to do cross-checking among disciplines. And also, we're feeding that to the construction manager. So they don't, they don't just get the information at the end of a phase. They're working with us continuously in all these phases. So that would be a time we would turn the documents over to them to, again, start reviewing prices, even though they owe a price in their contract to you at 100% of design development. Again, still working with faculty on these submissions. So you see, to be determined as soon as we get that to the construction manager. In other words, what we believe we heard in the most recent meetings with faculty, we'll also be going back to faculty to review that floor plan. Currently, my biggest concern on that one, on the to-be-determined under the current high school, is to make sure we have the scope correct on Nichols Career Center and the budget lined out with the, with the construction manager. There's just more, more questions and more things moving in Nichols than there is in the existing high school. More walls remain as is in the existing high school than Nichols. It's just the nature of the design of the project. So that's an important meeting we have coming up that we need to set as soon as possible. March 16th, 100%, you'll see, follows slightly behind, about a month behind the second high school in terms of design development submission. Again, you'll not only see, the architectural drawings are used, seeing, but all the disciplines will be included in that work: structural, civil, mechanical, electrical plumbing. And then also following about a month behind the second high school, final construction documents, June 15th. So again, we're feeding documents to the construction manager, but continuing to meet with staff and work on the documents at the same time. I will say that we initially started with the current high school, thinking that it had more limits to it in terms of design. And so if we could make it work there, we could apply those things to the second high school. So we had initially started with the current high school and hitting it pretty hard. You'll see now, we're hitting the second high school pretty hard at the advice of the construction manager, because they're more concerned about schedule and the enormous amount of site work required before they can start pouring footings and foundations on a new building. Any questions?
I have a question regarding all these dates and all these different bid packages that will require board approval. Are we coordinating calendars so that as much could be done during regular meetings, or we can have as much notice on special meetings?
Yeah, the first one went out, and we didn't really get a good notice, any of us did. And then the date had to change. And so I did express to the construction manager, we would like upfront notice, we do plan to be at those bid openings, and we'd like a little more heads up when those packages are coming or when the bids are due. So I have asked that. They've agreed, they just said some districts don't care. So I assure them that district did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good information, good update. Jason, just to deal with the balance of his time, it'd be you. The next item up is superintendent update.
Absolutely. We have, last Friday, we had a coffee with Larry at the Miller Center. It's the first Friday of each month, so I want to encourage folks to come visit, 7:00 a.m. It's free, it's always a good thing. And so, you know, just want to invite our community, if you're not able to attend in person, it is live streamed, so encourage folks to watch, watch with that. So we have our first one, the next one is on the 2nd of February, 2218 is our next one. Groundbreaking for our second high school, Amy, Amy's actually facilitating this evening upstairs, actually, one of our committee meetings, that's an online meeting. She's, we posted that, she's facilitating that upstairs, so she's upstairs. But the groundbreaking for our second high school is February 10th at 11:00 a.m. So we invite all of you, there's going to be more information coming on that, I sent something to the board, so encourage folks to be a part of that. Talking about our boundary line discussion, I want to give an update on that of our committee, kind of where we are, what we're looking at in the timeframe, and looking at our current boundaries that we have. Jason, if you could bring up here, somebody running on the beach. Amy, great job. Okay, so here's our current district boundary lines. North is at the top, obviously, and we've got Callaway Hills north, here's the river, Pioneer Trail, this here's Bel Air, I think most of you guys can see yours, just as far as I can point out. Morale Heights, east, Thorpe Gordon, west, south, Lawson, Cedar Hill, Thorpe Gordon here. So last year, as you know, we changed boundary lines for Thorpe Gordon, East Elementary, and Morale Heights. East Elementary had been overcrowded, we put boundary lines back like they were, and has really alleviated some of the space issues there at East Elementary, and that was, here were the changes. So where the current high school, the reason why we're looking at boundary lines, and a couple of things. One, our policy committee discussed on visiting and looking at our boundary lines on a more regular basis. Okay? It's a topic that's not something that folks usually get excited to talk about, but we're excited to have these conversations because we know they're real, and we know folks are very concerned about our boundary lines. I will say, our goal is that it doesn't matter where you live, within our district boundary lines, it's to be quality education regardless of where you live. And that's what we will continue to strive for. With that being said, we recognize there are traditions, there are neighborhood schools that, I went there, my mom and dad went there, et cetera, that folks want to go to those schools, and we recognize that, and that is important. So you put all that together when you look at these and assess. The issue why the current, where the second high school sits, is right here off of 179, which is here in Cedar Hill's boundary lines. And Cedar Hill right here feeds Lewis and Clark, which sits over here, which we have shared throughout the campaign last year for the second high school, we shared that Lewis and Clark will feed the current high school, and Thomas Jefferson will feed the second high school. The location of the second high school is in Cedar Hill's boundary lines, which feeds Lewis and Clark. And so you could say, well then, why did you put it there? Well, we own that land. Okay? And so before you look at going and buy more land, you look at your current land to go on, it was paid for, so that's where we're going to put the school. So working through, throughout the campaign, I was asked many times, what about boundary lines? And I shared, I do not anticipate wholesale changes, but I anticipate tweaking lines, but we will try to vet the process, communicate with folks along the way, and look at all of our different options. So with that, and I'll touch on this here, again, we put together a committee, asked folks if they were interested, and the goal of the committee wasn't to, hey, decide on what the boundary lines are going to be, as in a cutthroat, how can I be on the boundary committee? But to vet the process and look at considerations, look at what the options might be. And that, basically, we wanted, we have 11 elementary schools, and we wanted to try to get three folks from each elementary school to get an equal representation across the board. We have 30 committee members. The makeup, the demographics, 26 are white, four are black, 17 are parents, three are staff, seven community members, and three parents/staff. All schools have three reps, except Callaway and East, they do not, so we're looking to continue to fill those with this committee. So we had a committee meeting, and starting out, the district hired Preston Smith as a demographer to come in and look at options. Okay? Now, many feel like that the recommendation was decided that night to, that that's the plan. Okay? I think there's some folks here tonight, I had calls today, I have emails still waiting in my mailbox that, is there going to be a decision made tonight? Our goal from the beginning has been by this August, so folks would have one year. Okay? But if it was October, it would be better to do it right, vet the process, have however many meetings we need to have would be more important than rushing the process just to get it done by a certain timeframe. So it's one reason why there is not an agenda item tonight. When we do ask for approval from the Board of Education, it will be an agenda item, and folks will have an opportunity to speak on that. The goal, looking at the boundary lines, as was, one reason why is you look at Cedar Hill, for example. Okay, Cedar Hill right here, because the community said in 1993, we weren't going to have the haves and the have-nots between both middle schools. Okay? So that's why, if you live south of Covington Gardens, there in Lewis and Cedar Hill, you go clear over here to Lewis and Clark, when Thomas Jefferson is a lot closer. And so folks say, well, that doesn't make sense. I understand, if it was a perfect world, it'd be a plaque, we'd draw a line down the middle, but it's not perfect. This community is hilly, we have a river that runs through, and there are a lot of dynamics with that. So looking here, trying to keep the poverty the same, I'll give you an update, I just looked here on Desi's website, last year, poverty was 54.4% at Thomas Jefferson, and it was 54.1% at Lewis and Clark. So it was a little higher at Thomas Jefferson last year. This year, 57.1 at Lewis and Clark, 54.1 at TJ. So it flipped. But it's been very similar, and it has held true since 1993 of having the poverty rates between the two. So that is the reason why Cedar Hill, for example, feeds over to Lewis and Clark. You have some other schools that as far as location-wise, the go-to Thomas Jefferson or go-to Lewis and Clark. So trying to keep that poverty, and when we look here at Cedar Hill, because it feeds Lewis and Clark, what are some options? Okay? So a demographer came up with, there were six scenarios, and the six scenario had, and I know we have some Covington Garden folks here, welcome, of having part of Lawson, basically the bottom part of Lawson, to go to Lewis and Clark, and the top part of Cedar Hill, where the second high school is located, to go to Thomas Jefferson to keep that poverty the same. It wasn't the recommendation, it wasn't the committee's recommendation, it is one possibility. I anticipate having 15 scenarios. Okay? You can look at, our boundary line for our middle schools is about right here. This is Lawson, you've got south right here, you've got west, you've got Thorpe. Here, as far as in close proximity, as far as boundary lines, of looking at what those scenarios are. So my anticipation is, from the committee, and which another thing, there was a question last Friday by a gentleman at our coffee, asking about the, for example, the meeting that was at 6:00 tonight for one of the boundaries online meetings, that that is open to the public. We posted that, Amy is facilitating that now, there's one Thursday, I believe, and we encourage folks, if you'd like to attend that as well, they are open to the public. It's kind of like when we had the first committee meeting at Dix Road, we had a place for the public to sit, but not for participation. The difference between a public meeting and a meeting in public, as far as the difference is there, but having a committee. But I want to assure folks, everybody in here, that everyone will have an opportunity. I anticipate, whether in two weeks, or in two months, or in five months, once the committee is comfortable with, here's 15 scenarios we'd like to look at while keeping enrollment the same between the two, or very close, and the poverty same, or very close, of looking at those scenarios, of going to Lewis and Clark, hosting a town hall meeting, inviting the community, everybody and their neighbor can come, breaking off in groups, and looking at these scenarios, and asking all the questions in the world folks want to ask. Also, then anticipate having one at Thomas Jefferson, inviting the community. I've had many folks in my office want to talk about them, I welcome folks over a cup of coffee. I had a conversation today of possibly going to Lawson, myself, inviting all the parents, and I'll come speak to them, and we'll look at scenarios, and we'll have discussions on that. So there's a lot of different dynamics with that, we recognize that. We're going to try to be very honest upfront, very transparent, use some common sense, while still keeping the poverty and the enrollment between the two very, very similar, to ensure we don't have the haves and the have-nots, and that is something that our community can be very proud of as we work through the process. So we don't anticipate wholesale change. I mean, you look at our boundary lines, and you can ask the questions of, well, why in the land is that the case? You know? That's a great question. I don't know either. I mean, there are some areas that you wonder about boundary lines, and we're going to look at those, and if we can do some tweaks, we will do that. At the end of the day, our goal is to ensure that we have schools that have a quality learning environment for all of our students, that the communities, that the neighborhoods can be proud of, use some common sense proximity-wise, geographically, but also getting, asking folks to take a step back and try to come up with some scenarios of, we're trying to keep poverty the same between the two schools as we look at that. So that is kind of a nutshell, because there's a lot of different parts to this, and I recognize that. Any questions or comments here on the, on the scenarios, here from the board, that you guys would like to touch on, or maybe I touched on Friday, or Michael?
I would just say one thing. I know that we're putting it on our website, the webinar original, but we don't put the site where one could come and just observe. I would suggest that we at least identify where it is.
Okay. But when they can look online?
The location. No, say that, I'm wanting to, as a community member, I know I'm not going to be talking, but at least I know a site where the webinar is going to be.
It's tonight, right? 6:00 tonight upstairs?
Right, but it's not on our website. We did not identify.
What's it post, the meeting, where the meetings will be?
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I didn't know whether it was posted on, or if Amy put that on the website or not, but we did post it.
We identified it was tonight, yes. The time is posted, but not the location.
Okay. That's something for future, we can make sure folks an opportunity on that.
And also, may I please have a copy of that information on the breakdown in the committee, the racial diversity?
If you can, I'll send that, this here's just my handwritten notes on here, that I'll give you my sheet, but I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you.
I'll make sure the board has a copy of that, at the midst of that.
Sounds good.
So any questions on the, on the boundary line discussion with that? So, any questions on the, on the boundary line discussion with that?
Just a, just a follow-up, because I think it's important, because you covered a lot of information in your good report, just to reiterate, what I, what I heard you say, and I think what we all heard you say, is, is that the, there's going to be ample opportunity for the public to be able to be engaged and go through the process. We want to be respectful to the committee as they go through their work, and so that's why we have asked folks to, they're more than welcome to come, I know I publicly said and encourage folks to come, I know you have as well, and we want to make, we want to do what we can to make sure that folks are aware of that, and so, that if they want to come and observe a meeting and listen, they're more than welcome to do that. Not, on the other hand, but kind of, at the end of that process, is that once, like you said, once the committee feels like they've got some presentable information to be able to engage the larger public with, then you're going to go about putting together a couple of dates, one at Lewis and Clark, one at Thomas Jefferson, and that we will try to publicize that as well as we can, you know, and let folks know when those times are, and they'll have an opportunity to do that.
And we could set those dates, we talked about it today, we could set those dates, but honestly, we want to make sure that the committee feels comfortable with the scenarios, and like I said, it might be in three weeks, or it might be in three months, but we'll give folks plenty of opportunity, they'll have an opportunity, you know, to speak and ask us to, I told some folks today from Lawson, I said, you know, "I'll come, promise not to throw anything at me," and so, it was a good discussion, but we're going to go through the process, we're going to be honest with folks, looking at scenarios, we understand folks are very passionate, you know, saying, "I bought my home based on X, Y, and Z," and I said, "I understand that." We love it that folks are passionate about their school, my goal is that I want every school that folks, that they're so passionate about, but again, we also recognize it, that's not always the case, but we're, that's our goal, to raise the bar for all schools, because some of these kids are at every school, and our goal is that it doesn't matter where you send your kids, that it's a quality school, that we can become a premier school district, that's our vision, to be a premier, or one of the premier school districts in the state of Missouri, and through two high schools, and through boundary line discussions, so.
Any, would it be possible to stream some of these committee meetings, even though things are going on, on screen or online? Is it conducive to possibly streaming? Because it does generate a lot of interest in the community.
Well, I believe the online, the online, and I'm not familiar with, I've not used online meetings before the demographer, that's something they've done to try to be able to, as far as geographically, out of Kansas City here, being able to still have meetings that are open to the public, so they can view those, whether they go online with a site that they can't audio-wise, but they can come upstairs visually look at the computer to see them. So, again, they can participate, but they can listen, and they can visually look at the computers, they look at the different scenarios, because it is different from '93, I talked to, I was at Rotary today with Dr. Straub, sitting beside him and talking about it, the boundary lines for the middle schools, it was a much, much more cumbersome task than today, you can literally point to a black spot there on the screen, but you can move this line here, and it will hear, here's what the enrollment would be with schools, and here's what the, the free introducer, the poverty levels would be, and so, it's, it's pretty slick with regards to that. So, looking at those, giving our community an opportunity to be a part of this, we're not sliding anything on the road, there's no decision that's been made, again, we want to try to ensure that we have scenarios that have a positive learning environment for all of our schools and work through that process. So, one other thing I want to touch on here, I want to just give you an update, we will be giving a more in-depth update at our February meeting next month with regards to our diversity meetings that we had, kind of summarizing that, we had a community meetings with regards to diversity, we ask our staff, we ask our, getting ready to ask our students, and that's the one part that we don't have, to have the final take on that. Shelby will give us a little bit of an overview here with Dr. Simmons, who's going to come and do some staff training, that she's been having conversations with them. We want to see, the school has an important role, it's not all on the school, we have an important role on working through differences, whether that is of color, whether that is of values, whether that is by race, whether, whatever differences that we have, working through that, we believe we're stronger together, and that's part of the society, we need to work stronger together even when differences occur. I kiddingly give the example, even if you're KU fans, you know, we got to be able to get along with them, and, but that's real, but I don't mean to make light of that, of when there are real differences, how we work through those. So, we ask at the community meetings, what the school's role, the parent family's role, and then what the community's role, and we'll give a more in-depth update of that at our February board meeting after we have the staff, excuse me, the student input, we ask our, our staff, and we're asking our students, "What do you see as a school's role with regards to diversity?" Because there are differences, and we do have an important role in what we see as that school's role. From right now, without getting into all the details, I would say three things that have came out of this, one is the staff training, Shelby Scarborough, our Director of HR, would you give us an update, an overview of your conversations with Dr. Simmons, that will come do some staff training for us, please?
Sure. Good evening. Well, thanks to Mr. Cutie for writing a grant, we are going to be able to have Dr. Juanita Simmons, who is the Vice President of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Northwest Missouri State, come and spend three training sessions with our building administrators, our central, central office administrators, juvenile officers, SROs, and Parks and Recreation, and focusing on implicit bias, she is a facilitator for implicit bias training, and when I visited with her, she, her recommendation is that we do a training this semester, one over the summer, and then one again at the beginning of the school year. She follows the diversity learning environment theory and model, which mainly, she says, comes down to four things, how our perceptions are shaped, how our perceptions influence organizational climate, how our perceptions form daily practices, and how our perceptions result in discretionary decisions that impact others. So, she will actually help us look at our own data and do kind of an equity audit, and then focus on our own policies, procedures, and practices as a collective group. So, this goes beyond just building administrators carrying out to the buildings, it's going to be from all aspects of administration, working with Mr. Cutie and his staff, as well as our SROs, which I think will be very, very impactful. She's excited about coming, it's just right now, she's working on her semester schedule, so trying to find a date that coincides with all of our schedules, and as soon as we get those dates set, then we'll certainly let you know what those dates are going to be.
But we did anticipate one this spring, one this summer, and then one this fall.
Right at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, good. Okay. And she did some training when I went through my cohort, Dr. Program at Mizzou, she was at Mizzou before she was at Northwest, and it was a lot of great information, so.
Yep.
Great for sharing that.
Thank you.
So, that's kind of an update of that, we'll get into more detail here at the February meeting after we have our student input back with this, as we looked, Shelby just touched on our hiring practices, the multicultural advisory committee that we're going to bring back, we'll have some more information with that next month.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. A good report, a lot of things still going on.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next item on your agenda, future dates, I won't go through all of those, but just bring your attention to a couple of the near-term ones, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is coming up, and it's a day off for the school district, as well as many institutions around the community. We have a special board meeting on the 18th of January, nice and early, to certify the ballot, so please make sure that that's on your calendar, we need at least four of you here to be able to make that happen. And we have a board retreat coming up on Thursday, January 23rd, from 4:30 to 8:30 here at the board office, so looking forward to that. And that, we'll move on to your next agenda item, old business, second read of policies as presented there, your agenda, Mrs. Murray, would you like to follow up on that?
Yes, this is second read of the policies. In most instances, the policy committee accepted the MSBA recommendations, however, there were a couple of instances where we did not, specifically, policy EHBC dated governance and security, we recommended additional change in the sentence regarding litigation hold, because the scenario described could have had us, if we took the MSBA wording literally, could have had us destroying records ahead of time, and so, we recommend a slight change to that language. And also, the policy called for designating certain staff members to hold titles, let's see, and then KG-AF1, Community Use of District Facilities, this is a form, and our committee voted to reject the form MSBA supply, because our district has had an existing form in practice, and instead, we would like to continue using our form. Let's see, and the last one, KLA-AF1, Concerns and Complaints Regarding Federal Programs, this is a form, and we reject, we recommend a modification to the form, specifically, it asks people for what specific federal law they feel might have been violated, and we wish to change that to no, list the specific law or regulation if known, and that essentially was it. We did have a couple of policies that were accepting the MSBA recommendations, but then also asking the finance committee to look at other sections of those policies, so those will be coming back at a future date, depending on what the finance committee recommends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, once again, this is second read, so.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Pam, on EHBC here, where it's highlighted, and there's no title, are you, are we saying that this policy is going to have a title of district information?
Yes.
And are we, should we put something in there, we're just going to leave it blank to say title?
We are putting in there Dawn Bearhorst as the Information Security Officer, and Joe Martin as the alternative, and when this goes up to MSBA, their names and complete titles will be inserted.
Okay.
And there is one other policy, IGBE, where we designate Bridget Frank, Director of Special Services, District Liaison to the State. So, any, anywhere they want a designation, the committee did come up with a designation based on administrative recommendations.
Any additional questions for Pam? So, again, second reads, we look for a motion for approval of these individual policies as discussed and presented.
So, move.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Additional discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Very good, thank you all. Policies are adopted, on to new business, approval of contractors' environmental legal liability, Mr. Hoffman.
Page 140 of your packet, we talked about this a little bit last week when we finished up business with the OSIP, in that with CSIP, NavHOLs included what's called contractors' environmental legal liability, also known as pollution coverage. Willis Towers Watson marketed this for us, brought back a proposal that's on page 140, they gave us several options, and in talking through with them, they feel like option three, where we have $5 million of per occurrence limits, and a $5 million aggregate limit is adequate insurance for our project, they do believe we do need pollution insurance, they, as you can see, it's, it's very rare to have a claim, you're buying $5 million of insurance for only $66,000. So, the chances of having a claim are very slim, but since you can buy that for only $66,000, it seems like a good idea. Pam and I had a discussion through email about, should we consider maybe more? Insurance brokers are always willing to sell you more insurance, so it's just whatever your level of comfort is, and they feel like three is sufficient. What you're getting, if you go to option four, is it would take two catastrophic incidents, because you have $5 million per occurrence, so it would take two very large occurrences, so you see that for only $13,000, you're buying an additional $5 million of coverage, but you only get that if there's more than one occurrence. So, the recommendation is option three, but be happy to have more discussions about any of the other ones on the table.
Questions for Jason?
On that page, no, I had other questions that we discussed.
On builders' risk.
Yeah, did you want to?
Well, there are two, there are two separate items.
I'd move to approve option three.
Second.
Okay. Marla, did I hear you?
I'd move to approve option three on the pollution coverage.
Thank you. Who was it saying?
Scott.
Scott. Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Very good, thank you.
So, one final, I hope, insurance product that we need to buy on this project is builder's risk insurance, this is pretty standard, again, Willis Towers Watson marketed this for us, they have all of the coverages listed, that's on page 141 through 45, I believe, in your packet, has a total premium of $133,000 estimated for the two-year life of the project. Pam, you did have some questions earlier, do you?
Yeah, on page 142, on the form titled Key Information, Item Three is value of existing building structures need to be insured available, and I just had a question, since the second high school project, we do have existing facilities, theoretically, during the construction, they could come up with something, tear down the wrong wall, knock something over with a crane or something, so the builder's risks, it seemed to me that we ought to have a value in there for what we have now, and that that ought to specifically be covered in risk, unless they're just not understanding this.
Or does it just tell us it's covered, but it doesn't cost us anything?
No.
Yeah, because as you go on, on the matrix, it says, Coverage Matrix Section Damage to Existing, it says not covered, and they put that in all caps, so, I guess, either I'm not understanding it, or I think we got, have a gap. And my understanding is you were going to work with them to get some numbers filled in, or?
So, the number on the prior page, where it says value of existing building structures, number three, that one is, we've sent them our state schedule of values for our regular property insurance, so they're going to insert the value that we have on our insurance schedule for the current high school and Nichols, and so, we can still negotiate and try and get some coverage in that area.
So, our current liability policy, does it cover us?
Is it triplex?
Yeah. I mean, in our current liability policy of the buildings that we own, cover us if these builders do something to damage our current property, wouldn't our current?
Coverage. Address that.
Am I wrong?
I know what you're, I know what you're, right.
Because they're insured right now.
Right. So, if I take my car and drive it through the building right now, it's covered.
Yeah, but.
Or my insurance company, they're going to fight it out together, which one of them is going to cover it.
Right.
So, I don't know that, I would think, though, that our current policy is covered.
I'm struggling. Where the exposure is.
What was your concern?
My concern is if something happens, let's say they knock down the wrong wall, or a crane knocked something over, and we have damage to our existing facilities, is our insurer, our current insurer, going to say, "That ought to be covered in your construction policy," because this clearly is not anything that we envisioned when you wrote your policy, and I want to make sure we don't have a gap. I mean, the whole reason we went with wrap-up insurance was to make sure that we had no gaps, and we didn't have duplicate. Well, obviously, we need insurance for existing.
Right.
And I guess that's my concern, does this represent a gap? If so, is that a risk we really want to assume? Because you do a lot of damage in short period of time.
I guess my recommendation would be that we approve what we have, and if we have a gap, you can buy more insurance, so I can work with our current property carrier, and this is with Hartford, with Hartford, to find out who should cover that and what it's going to cost.
The Hartford is doing this.
Because really, when will they, they aren't even going to be stepping foot on our property until April or May?
Well, no, we're going to want this for builder's risk when we're.
Over there, but I mean the existing, at the current high school.
Well, the bid package doesn't even go out until June.
So, we have some time to revise this for the existing structures before anybody even steps foot on.
If there's a gap.
If there's a gap.
That's why I say we can approve this, and find out if we have a gap.
With the, with that exception.
Addendum, that we're going to look into who's going to cover the existing facility, should there be an issue?
Absolutely.
I don't think that this is a wrong policy, I think that you've pointed out a question we need to get the answer to, but, but until then, I think we have some time to figure that out, and if there is a problem there, we'll go with our existing policy to make sure that we have. we have gap coverage.
Right.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Lori.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Very good.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you all. Thank you, Jason. All right. Last item of business on your agenda would be a motion, yes stated, don't forget who's up, whether it's Lori.
Lori's got it down fast.
Lori.
Thank you. Motion to suspend open to enter into closed meeting by rule call vote pursuant to Chapter 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, Section 13, Individually Identifiable Personnel Records, and 14 records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Good job.
Action by rule call vote?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Lori, aye.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.